We have two of the four committee members, so we do not have a majority, so we will be receiving information only. Whatever's going to be the most expeditious way to get through everything? All right, and I see that there's two documents attached to today's agenda, a roster for Karen Crowe High School and immersion detail report.
So, those are two examples of rosters and what they look like in the breakdown. Like, the Karen Crowe High one is pretty sophisticated. It shows, it's got like the pie charts and all those. And then there is a document that I have that I can pull up for you.
And the document I'm looking at for Karen Crowe, is that something for the board members or the public can see that? That's got all the students' names and addresses?
It has students' names and stuff, so it's not...
Okay. I want to make sure it's not because it's not redacted.
Right. It has...
Okay.
Right. Because it has student information on there.
Okay, so you can begin where you left off from the meeting.
The last time we met at the workshop, we'd left off at the section about expectations and enrollment guidelines. We were about to discuss, we had just finished talking about the entry criterias, grade expectations.
And are you going to put that up for us to see?
Yeah, I'm trying to, I don't know.
You need the computer, can I?
Thank you. Thank you. So, we have, we talked about entry criteria. As a matter of fact, I also full-surveyed over 40 individuals from principals, academy directors, co-academy directors, lead teachers, counselors, and have those results too to share with you that relate directly to the modification considerations. So, when we talk about expectations and enrollment guidelines, there are four major pillars of expectations that I put together based on the feedback from the executive committee meeting in March and feedback from academy directors and principals over the last 11 months. The first one is academics. So, once a student is in the program now, it's about, the conversation is, what do we do next? What do we expect? Do we remove them if they're not maintaining certain grades, GPA standards? So, in academics, they must maintain a 2.5 in their core academy courses. For example, if they're at STEM and there's an engineering class, they have to have at least a 2.5 to stay in. Maintain 2.0 in core courses, for example, math, English, science. And then, at the elementary level, maintain a C or higher or equivalent, because elementary is a little bit different, especially like K through 3. Discipline is also an issue that's come up from the academy directors and principals. So, adhere, first of all, to LPSS policies and adhere to academy program requirements. For example, if there's a science lab protocol, internship behaviors, AOT, for example, works with CGI, they're a big supporter. So, if a student is not acting properly, then that should be one of the grounds for discipline, JOTC guidelines, et cetera. The next one is attendance. Attendance, one of the things that I, when I researched other districts as well, attendance for the academies, they just follow regular district policies. There's really nothing else above and beyond that. Where it really gets serious is the participation section of it. One of the things that we find, one of the things I've heard from academy directors is, there's a rehearsal for a concert for performing arts. And there's also a football game, or a basketball game, or basketball, basketball practice. This, the frustration is that these students don't attend the rehearsal for the music program that they've invested in and are part of to go to the basketball game, or to be a part of the basketball game, or to go to practice. So, those are the sections about the expectations. And I can go on to the next process about how to resolve some of those, unless you have questions. Okay. So, removal, how does somebody get removed? Where's the due process? How, where's the accountability? So, the due process model I set up was based off of feedback that I've received from academy directors and principals and research. One-on-one is when a first infraction occurs, where it's a student academic, academy director. It's all in there, so I might not go into detail of each one. The second level is parent intervention. It happens when, the second time it happens. Academy probation is third infraction. So, it's not a school-based LPSS probation, it's just an academy probation, it just stays at the academy level. And then, if it happens the fourth time, there is a recommendation for removal. And the principal, or academy director, or counselor fills out that request and sends it to the department. And we review it, and we look at all, any documents they have, supporting documents, indicating all the times that they met with a student and the parent and the counselor to resolve the issue. And if it still hasn't continued, then the student would be recommended for removal. And then, the appeal for removal occurs at any time within the first or second semester. I believe it was mentioned at the board executive committee to have that option of removing a student prior to the end of the year. So, this occurs within the first or second semester. Upon talking to academics, it was advised to leave it towards the end of the semester because of scheduling. So, it wasn't necessarily suggested to remove a student in the first nine weeks, but the first nine weeks, of course, would be that starting point if they started to do that. By the second nine weeks, which would be the end of the first semester, then we would look at removing the student. So, it'd have to be approved by the department, and then the student would be removed from the program. I want to get away from this, remove them and send them back to their home zone school because several of our academies exist within a school. And several of our academies have students that are in-zone to that school. So, it was, the student would be returned to their home zone school if they're out of zone, or they would be removed from the program if the program is at their home zone school, and they would not be eligible to get, to take those elective classes even as a non-academy student. If the student chooses to return in the future, the parent has to complete an appeal for entry for consideration to return. And students would not be able to apply to another academy, which currently happens. So, one of the academy principal, the academy directors and principals get upset and say, "Okay, well, if a student is being removed for discipline, or conduct, or not participating from Lafayette High's Health Careers Academy, why are we allowing them to go immediately to another program if we have an issue like that?" There's a difference between that and a student just having a different change of mind about what they want for their career or future and their, you know, their interests. That's a different subject. But if somebody's removed, they just, they want that opportunity, that, they, they want the option to not allow the student to apply, which is in the... So, that has to do with those two areas.
I'd say it's common sense. I mean, everything you're presenting here makes sense to me, so... And I just want to clarify, are you asking us to confirm the direction that you're headed and give you clarity?
Mr. Kinesik, ideally, we would take a little bit of time and try to draft some regulations based on feedback that we've received from the board, and then bring back to you essentially an administrative rule that details the regulations recommended by the board and the administration regarding schools of choice. At that point, there might be some difference of opinion perhaps about the language of the regulation, but the board could then tweak that.
Right. And I think, I mean, the initial entry requirements, I think, you know, you've kept those at what appear to be very basic, minimal standards, which means that so long as a student is participating and at least getting a C average, then they should be eligible for any, any opportunity that there, that exists at LPSS. And I think that the thought behind that is that maybe these kids, if they were inspired in, in a program that saturated them with things that they're interested in, would perform even better than their 2.0, right? Which I think then justifies being able to raise the standard for those core requirements in each program. I think the challenge for the directors, and I think, you know, this is a good lesson for anybody. You always have to, I mean, I know I'm always having to justify my existence in this world, like, why I need to be paid by my customer, why I need to be given a job, right? I'm always having to do that. It is non-stop every day. So, I think it's a good exercise for academy directors to have to justify their existence in this world. Why are we spending more money? Why are we trucking kids all the way across the parish to put them in your seats? We need to be able to justify that, not only to the board, but to the public. So, I think it's a good exercise for academy directors to develop standards, rubrics, whatever is the requirement, to say, "Hey, this is why we're special. It's because we're teaching out of this textbook and not that textbook, and we're holding them to this standard and not that standard."
I want to share a little bit about the survey, just so you have an understanding too of where the academy directors and principals and lead teachers are coming from. I won't take too long with it, but just so it's out there, 41 responded. As you can see, 39% are academy directors or co-directors, 29% are principals, and then the rest are dispersed between other administrators. It was a nice pool of different academies. When discussing, the question was, please choose a change, a name change option for the schools of choice. The majority, 48.8% chose magnet academies, 22% chose academies of excellence, and then you have some different ones. Some of them misunderstood the question, but they had different opinions about their specific academy. Several, two said, "Leave the name, schools of choice." Are you in favor of restricting points of entry at grades 4, 5, 8, and 11? It was pretty much 50/50 on that question. Yes, no? And then, are you in favor of enforcing entry criteria? 92.7% said yes. And you can look in detail what those responses were. Of course, this is also depending on whether they were an elementary, middle, or high school program. But as you can see, 68.3% asked for grade C or higher for entry. 80% said discipline. Essays or letters, of course, those apply to the programs that want them. 16 auditions are in portfolios, et cetera. Please indicate which enrollment expectations you would like to see enforced for your specific program. The majority, over 70% of academy directors, principals, and everyone else agreed that we should be enforcing academics' participation, discipline, and attendance. Are you in favor of removing a student prior to the end of the year for violating any of the enrollment expectations, for example, at the end of the first semester? 68.3% said yes.
I just have a question on that. You'd mentioned the due process, you know, four steps, and that maybe you wouldn't remove them in the first nine weeks, maybe the second, probably by the third. Why's it got to take so long? I mean, why, if someone is not performing, and, I mean, they could not perform for two weeks straight, and I wouldn't want them in my program. If I was the teacher, I would not want someone who doesn't want to participate, who is a discipline issue, who's not cutting it in my program. They're nothing but a distraction. It's that 80/20 rule. Spending 80% of my time on 20% of the problem. So, if we're not going to be expeditious in enforcement, then we're going to be lackadaisical, and we're going to have, you know, I mean, it's a Davey term, guys smoking and joking in the corner when everybody else is trying to learn. So, why's it have to take so long?
I think the, the thought behind it, behind giving it that much time, was to allow the academy directors and the principals and the counselors to manage the communication so that there is due process written down. But certainly, if, if your direction, if, if you'd like to see that shorter and quicker, then that certainly, that can go part of it. I mean, there could be, there could be an issue where the student violates all four within four weeks of each other, or has all four infractions within four weeks. Of course, the student can be referred, I mean, referred for removal. But then, it would be up to whoever that managing person is at the end of the day, who looks at those appeals for removal, to say, "Have we given the student enough time to correct their issue? Or have the, has the teacher or academy director done their due diligence to help the student correct their behavior?" Or whatever the issue is, so it's...
Well, I'm all for due process. I just wouldn't want to put an artificial timeline on it.
Mr. Kinesik.
Yes, ma'am.
For high school, it's normally an issue of what does a principal do with a student who comes in the second, nine weeks, and you don't have a course to offer for credit? So, the child ends up losing a half-credit or potentially a full-credit. So, at midterm break, we can normally, as a high school principal, put a child into a half-credit course so that they retain something. But coming in the, anytime in between those two breaks, is normally the child is going to lose credits.
Yeah, that makes, I understand. I understand not wanting them to lose credit, but I also care about the other 80% of the kids participating in the class and the instructor. So, you know, maybe we can look at that. Maybe we can just look a little harder at, what do we do with people that are, if we're going to hold them accountable, what do we do to hold them accountable? What do we do with them if they're going to be removed from the program? Do we put them in a, I don't know, study hall, or? I don't know that solution, but it just seems to me, getting them out of the classroom is more helpful than letting them linger.
Mr. Kinesik, we probably need, need to do some more querying the program directors and find out just how large is this potential problem of students who end up in a, in a program but have no interest in following rules and regulations. I think we can do that.
Well, and I understand the concern about the half-credit, but we have other students in our system who, for whatever reason, don't earn their half-credit. Either they don't make the scores, their absenteeism, or whatever, and we do have ways of dealing with that, either through summer school, or they don't get enough credits to graduate. That's one of the consequences of their behavior that's resulting in them being removed from the academy. So, while I'm concerned that students aren't getting their credit, in this situation, the reason they're not getting credit is because of their behavior. And so, that's a consequence of that. So, I'm not sure we need to hold their hands through that and say, "Well, you really don't fit with this program, but we're going to let you stay till Christmas because we're going to pat you on the back and make sure you get that credit, even though you have no interest in the program." So, I'm not sure that that's the right reasoning to make those students, or allow those students to stay till mid-year.
So, I also asked, are they in favor of eliminating numbered waitlists or using a random waitlist? It was actually 50/50. It skewed a little bit. It should be actually more in favor of random versus not. Several of them misunderstood the question, so I had to tweak the question later. There were four of them that misunderstood the question, but it's, it's about 50/50 about this random waitlist.
And explain to me briefly again, the numbered waitlist. That's basically whoever gets their name in soonest?
Correct. So, currently, we have, of course, the A and the B list, but then we have a weighted, numbered waitlist. So, we have an academy program with, at the entry point level, is 50 seats open, and we have 100 applicants. So, naturally, 50 students would be waitlisted. Currently, they're numbered, so, you know, there's, there's always like a number one or a number two.
Numbered how?
Like, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6...
Well, I understand that part, but numbered by the order that they've been interviewed?
No, the computer system randomly chooses a number for them.
So, that's how they get on it? But that's random. You're calling it numbered, but that's still a random assignment?
It's still, right. There's just a number assigned to their waitlist, their waitlist placement.
All right. And then, you mentioned the other night that there are students who get on more than one waitlist.
Correct.
Okay. So, is that going to be talked about later?
That, yes. That wasn't in this, this, this survey. But, the, the waitlist part, actually, especially with the split of the A and the B list, it doesn't really serve the needs, it doesn't help the students anymore, so...
And what's the A and B list again?
The A and the B list started out with racial demographics, and then changed to socioeconomic demographics. So, now, the A list is high, is non-free and reduced, and the B is free and reduced. But, for example, an academy that has 50 seats, we split it. So, we have 25 on the A list, 25 on the B list, to have a balance. But, your, your applicants are actually, 70, 75% are B-list applicants, and then you have the 25% that are A-list. So, your waitlist for the B side, the B list, is actually longer than your waitlist for the A. Or, you might in fact not even have a waitlist for the A side.
And what's our justification for having the A and B list? I know what it was originally under DSEG, but...
There is no, there's no more justification, really. If you look at where we are as a district in terms of Title I, if you, if you look at all the other, the ways that students are coming into the programs, there's, there's really no logic behind having an A and a B list.
Right. If it's truly random?
Correct.
Then, the numbers are going to work themselves out?
Correct.
For those people who are interested in the program?
Correct.
So, I would suggest eliminating A and B list and making it just a true, find a number it if the computer's selecting those names randomly?
Correct.
If that's true, and there's no opportunity for someone to go in and enter data to bump somebody up the list. If it's truly random, then I think that's the direction we should go.
Correct. And then, the application itself has the capability to randomly select. If somebody's on, if somebody's on the accepted list and they choose to decline, the application is set, the software is set up to automatically choose another random name from the waitlist to fill that seat. Sibling priorities, we pulled that. It's, it's a little bit all over the place. Everybody has their own ideas. To remain as is, that's 24, almost 25% said to keep it the way that it is, that it's only offered in elementary school, and that it only applies to multiples like twins in middle and high school. Let's see here. 20, 30%, the majority, if you take all of this, the majority, 30%, basically said to eliminate priority, sibling priorities completely. So, but that's one of the topics about the application process and the enrollment, and one of the issues that we've been talking about, so...
And I think I mentioned the other night, I don't think we need the sibling priority with the one exception. I do think if you've got twins, or triplets, or whatever the case may be, that may be the one exception. I don't know with my fellow board members, but sibling priority, I think it's been overly extended from what the original intent was, and it's a complicated thing. So, I would certainly agree with the, those that voted no, that it'd be eliminated completely. We may just have to carve out a very specific exception, perhaps, for the multiples.
The, the way it was initially intended was, yeah, it was to alleviate some of this transportation burden on the parents that have a kindergartner coming in and a third grader existing at the school, or a second grader. It was never intended to be for K through 5 or pre-K through 5. So, I think maybe a happy medium, or a happy place to go to, would be to take it back to what it was with kindergartners, only, only if that older sibling is at least going into the third grade. So, it justifies that transportation need to keep two younger siblings together. And only if, like, a lot of these entry criterias and what we do with enrollment and how it works is really dependent on whether they even qualify. So, if we're talking about entry requirements even for elementary school, for at least a letter of intent, then this sibling priority would only apply once that letter of intent actually qualified the student to be entered into it. So, sibling priority would only apply if their grades met the requirements. Sibling would only, you know, so it all still depends. It's, it's what we look at after they've already met all their entry requirements. And then, of course, we, I just surveyed to see who'd be, who would like to be involved in any kind of discussions about it. And then, we had a number of several, a number of comments and areas of opportunities to look at that we can speak to later. Let's see here. So far, let's go here. The next topic that we had, we touched up on at the board workshop, it was about transportation opportunities and different tiers and different systems. You know, New Orleans uses bus passes. We talked about how to manage that here. Some of them have tiered systems. Baltimore School District uses a different type of tier system. So, kind of to elaborate more on the model that I showed about J. Wallace James, is they have extended zones and they have the in-zone. The way they look at their transportation model is pretty much like that bullseye mentality where you have that middle, J. Wallace James, for example, is in SJ Montgomery Zone. So, then, those students would naturally get priority into, not priority, but they would be able to apply sooner and apply for transportation. And then, whatever zone is connected, that extended zone would also be able to get transportation, and then the ones outside of that area would either have to get themselves into that in-zone area, or use a mega uber satellite stop, or provide their own transportation. And the one thing that I failed, well, I didn't have time to mention at the workshop was, if you look at STEM, STEM is in a geographic area that you wouldn't expect to have a lot of popularity. You know, it's, it's difficult just logistically to get there. It's not easy access off of main roads. It's bi-rail tracks, it's, you know, deep, deep in the heart of that area. And they also have entry requirements and expectation requirements, and Jeff Debataz is here too, to speak to anything to that. But what, what's interesting about STEM is that with all of these obstacles and all of these, you know, walls up, even with the transportation going to, I think it was almost half of their satellite stops, they have one of the longest car lines in their history. And what that shows is investment and intent. So, it's a clear example of parents still wanting to get their kids there. Yes, it's probably an issue right now because we never had to deal with the car line that long, but if you look at investment, intent, and you're concerned that a program will suffer because you remove transportation or change it, I think STEM is a really good example of that not being the case.
We agree.
Can you just talk again briefly about the mandatory pathways? Were you going to be able to give us something in writing about those? I think we were all surprised to hear that those existed. And it'd be good to know, one, where they came into being, why they came into being? I mean, did the board approve it? Was that just unofficial through principals and administration? And which schools, like, where are the pathways going?
Sure. I didn't get to finish the actual flow chart for that. The priority, the pathway started about 10 years ago. When they, when they started the program, they started looking at ways to engage the students, to keep them there, and to show a pathway. Most districts kind of have this, this notion of pathway. The priority part is, I think, what kind of hurt the program in terms of enrollment and equitability, equity. So, for example, J. Wallace James, their arts and technology. They, the students that graduate from J. Wallace James, they, they go from 5th grade to 6th grade. They get priority into LJ Alamo automatically, or they get priority into STEM automatically. Students at Elio Jude's Environmental Science Academy automatically get priority into Lafayette Middle's Environmental Science Academy. I think there was talk over the years to get them priority into STEM, but because STEM was already popular, it was already getting priority from J. Wallace, it, it would have really hurt, I mean, it would have killed capacity and application capacity to do that.
All right. And let's use LEO Gd's as an example. Do we have a mechanism in place to track the kids who are choosing to follow the pathway to Lafayette Middle School? We hear anecdotally, for example, that, "Oh, well, the kids don't want to go to Lafayette Middle, so, once they're finished at LEO Gd's, they go to a different school of choice." Are we tracking that? I heard the same thing about Prairie, that the kids at Prairie in immersion don't want to go to Paul Bro immersion because of the school.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So, do we have a way of tracking the kids that are following the pathway and surveying them or their parents for the reasons why? Is it, it's too far away? Is it because we're worried about the school? We're worried about safety? We need to, we need to know that kind of information?
Sure.
So, that we can put plans in place to address safety concerns or whatnot? I know for the gifted program at Paul Bro, there's really not a concern from parents generally about sending their kids over there. So, it may just be a communication or informational issue that we can address.
The survey's never been done. I think individual academy have these exit surveys, but nothing at that level to see what it's done, and that's certainly something great to do. If you look at raw data, though, if you look at the number of students that are in the 4th and 5th grade at Elio Jude's, naturally, you would expect that same number to be the new enrollment count for 6th grade for Lafayette Middle. What I've heard, I mean, it's anecdotal, but what I've heard is that the, the issue is that it's at Lafayette Middle. That parents don't want their kids to go to Lafayette Middle. In fact, I had a conversation with a parent the other day who has two students, two children at Elio Jude's, and a third one that she's hoping to get in for sibling priority. And she's very, very concerned because she doesn't know where to send her student. And when I explained to her that Elio Jude's is an environmental science academy, and, you know, Lafayette Middle has an environmental science academy, what I find is that they don't really necessarily, they don't realize or recognize that Environmental Science Academy at Elio Jude's to know that it follows through into middle school. So, there's definitely that area of opportunity to grow the curriculum, to market it better, and to do things for LEO so that parents understand that what they're getting their child into is immersion and environmental science, so that they can grab them at that point to, for them to want to continue at Lafayette Middle. so that they can grab them at that point to, for them to want to continue at Lafayette Middle.
Right, so I think that we do need a, a consistent survey or mechanism for measuring that so that we can address those. That tells me that parents are choosing L. E. O. G. D.'s not for the prop, for the program that's there, but because it's a hundred percent choice and the staff there's done a tremendous job with the scores. But the environmental science program is just sort of a, an addition that sounds like many of the parents could.
Correct, and Elio Jude's as an environmental science academy does not have a science lab or a dedicated science lab teacher, which is very interesting because some of the other elementary schools, the majority of them actually do.
I think that goes back to, like, uh, uh, can you move to the right on your spreadsheet? No, I meant on that sheet that you showed, just to the right, to show the data. It was the one that showed what made each academy, what the curriculum and.
Oh, okay, sorry. The overview.
Yeah. So some of these are easily justifiable programs. You can see, and, I mean, health sciences would be one, or some of the emerging would be good examples. But, but some of these are not. Some of these are weak, some of these are alarming. Not to pick on any, but if, if you're a technology feeder and you can't, you know, pass the, uh, you know, the headline newspaper test that this is what we do and this is what, what makes us special about technology. Um, if you can't justify that to, one, yourself, to the board, then we certainly can't justify having a program that we send kids to for technology that then feeds into a STEM program. Right, that's just one example, and I say, I pick on that one because it's at the top of the list. I understand that, uh, an arts program that has a, a dedicated arts curriculum is justifiable. What I don't understand is how we can call something technology and then not have a justifiable, um, curriculum that backs it up. And I also find that, it, I mean, and maybe kids can focus on more than one thing. And maybe we can't have kids that are learning both arts and technology in, in elementary and exposing them at that level so that then they can pick a path. I, I can see that, I can see the justification, but, but only if there's a, a verifiable, um, curriculum that can justify us, again, going that extra mile to put kids in the seats.
I think if you're talking about priority for STEM, L. E. O. would be a better priority into STEM than J. Wallace James. Of course, there's, you know, like you said, there's elements of everything everywhere. Um, a STEM uses arts too, the way that they use visual graphics and, and different things in their technology. So yes, everything is kind of, you can, you can merge everything together. But as a whole unit to go to another whole unit, Elio Jude's, if they incorporated more of those project lead the way modules with the robotics and all the other things that they can do, would actually be better suited for STEM than J. Wallace James. Which would also speak to, um, the number of students that automatically go into STEM from J. Wallace James. So this spreadsheet, this, this data shows the number of students going to STEM or the number of students that actually applied to STEM and how many got in and how many didn't get in. But if you look at J. Wallace James, so fifty-nine, uh, forty-six of the fifty-nine students that came, applied from J. Wallace James, because of course J. Wallace James either goes to LJ or STEM. So the other ones actually applied to LJ Alamo. So fifty-nine of them, out of fifty-nine of them, forty-six of them got in. And I believe, um, the ones that didn't get in of that fifty-nine, they probably didn't have that C or higher at the end of the year when they were supposed to get in for the, um, for their grade requirement. So you can clearly see how many, uh, students were expecting to go from an academy like that to go into STEM. Those fifty-nine students could easily come from Elio Jude's and have a bigger experience than.
Mr. Debataz, can you come up? Sorry, you came to our meeting, so we have to talk to you. All right, so without a doubt, your school is, uh, doing extremely well, right? I mean, just statewide, probably even beyond that, so it's very popular. So my first question is, what is the total capacity at your school? How many students could you have? And how many do you have now?
Eleven hundred and seventy-eight, I think.
And of that eleven seventy-eight, how many are middle schoolers and how many are high schoolers?
We have. Two-ten, two-ten, four-fifty. It's four-fifty, five-fifty, six-ten, I think, uh, middle.
It's about half and half approximately.
Ms. Morris, we, we have been, over the past two years, adding seventy-five seats per year. We're, we're into year two of that, building up the program, um, annually. So we probably got about another two more years and then they should be topped out.
So clearly STEM is an area that's growing nationwide. Um, our STEM school is doing fabulously, it's very popular. Right now, we've got J. Wallace James feeding in through a pathway. And what other schools are feeding into your, like, at the middle school level, the entry middle school?
Lafayette Middle would feed into our school, from our middle to our high school.
So J. Wallace James and Lafayette Middle?
Karen Crowe Middle would feed into our high school as well.
Okay. Um, so are any of the other, other elementary schools other than James?
No ma'am, we've tried to get Elio Jude's, uh, to be a feeder because of the. I, I want to make sure that I word this correctly. The, the term STEM is used very loosely. And you hear, you know, we're going to, this is, everybody's going to be STEM, we're going to all, you know. There are eleven specific standards, you know, whether it's student standards, teacher standards, or community standards in order to have a successful STEM academy, you know? I think the standards being, one thing that I've had discussions with Ozzy about is to make sure that whoever feeds into the STEM schools understands what STEM standards are and how that learning should occur in a STEM school. I just want to make sure that if we are remaining as a STEM school, not everything is STEM. And you're hearing that because there's money that's been put into STEM nationwide. You know, um, when we first opened this school and I was first hired to become the principal of this school, the middle school was only the STEM academy and then the high school was, uh, career and technical high school. The second year, when we were asked if we wanted to go full STEM, we thought that was a great idea, you know? And with that, we started saying, okay, what are STEM standards? Went to the State Department, they had a STEM department at the time, and there were no standards established by the state of Louisiana. So I had to start communicating with principals in other states to see what those were. And then went through advanced ed, got certified as a, as a leader to see what STEM standards are. But when you hear STEM being implemented everywhere, you know, it's, it's a very loose interpretation of the word STEM. It generates dollars, so that's why STEM is used, you know, every, everything is STEM. But truly, it's, it's a mindset of learning. Technology is a component of STEM, okay? If it's used for problem-solving purposes, you know, it's, I mean, I think one thing that we look at in education is, you know, we've put all of this technology in our schools. Promethean boards were a big deal, you know, a few years back, you know, and now people can't, they struggle to teach without having a Promethean board in front of them. You can teach the STEM standards with a chalkboard, you know, uh, if you're teaching problem-solving skills and stuff of this sort. Now Promethean boards are really something that's a thing of the past because many times it became glorified overhead projectors. So I don't know if I'm answering your question, but.
Well, you are, but where I'm going, and I know I've been pestering Dr. Aguilar about this for a while, but it's my belief that we need to expand our STEM offerings across the board with perhaps an additional school, a STEM elementary school. And it sounds like we have enough middle school students at your school and at Lafayette Middle School that we could justify a STEM middle school. A hundred percent choice STEM middle school and your facility could become a hundred percent high school. Allows you to have more high school students, helps with some of the other schools. So I think that that's something that the planning committee, whatever your committee is called, should strongly consider. Because I think we have the number of students, um, and we've mentioned Lafayette Middle School. It's kind of in the center, kind of close to middle, to your STEM academy and whatnot. It might be a perfect location for that STEM middle school academy. Um, especially if we're looking towards or leaning towards a, a new name and we're going to go with Magnet, then I think that it would be fantastic for our district to have a Magnet STEM program beginning from pre-K that can be followed through strongly all the way through graduation. So I think that the system could build on what Mr. Debataz has done at his school and extend that all the way down, kind of meet in the middle. It seems that it's that middle school part. We've got J. Wallace James, we could probably strengthen some technology there. Maybe do a STEM on the south side of the parish for elementary. Uh, Drexel, maybe once the new school is built or something. And, and kind of build and grow the number of students that are in that program. I mean, I think that's one of our strongest programs and that's really where we should be focusing. Um, the second program, I think we should really be focusing on expanding and growing is the immersion program, particularly French. Um, we have an, uh, any number of students in three different elementary academies. Um, and it kind of goes away in middle school. Um, I think we have less than two hundred out of the, what, eight or nine hundred in elementary school going into middle school immersion? Is that about right? And I'm putting you on the spot. You can come up here.
Okay, so, yes, those, those numbers are, are good for what's the total enrollment. But in elementary school, that's seven grade levels and there's only three grade levels in the middle school. So going from fifth grade to sixth grade, we're losing about half, but we're not losing all of the fifth graders.
So about half of the fifth graders are choosing to go to Paul Bro for the immersion?
Initially, thirty percent was the loss at the beginning of the year, but after the transportation issues, it went to fifty percent.
Okay. So I think that, you know, we have a strong immersion program, at least through middle school. I understand once they get to high school, they test out and, and so it's not, I don't know, I don't know what happens after that. But we don't seem to have a strong immersion program in the high school level, I guess because of testing reasons.
Well, for French, we, we offer up to two courses per year. Um, well, in ninth grade, it's three, but two courses per year for them to take in French because the students, the student number of enrollees warrants it. So we don't currently have much for Spanish and nothing for Chinese past third grade. But, um, the, the French program is solid and they have a certified high school campus.
So I would certainly look at what we can do to expand. I think we're in a unique position in Lafayette between Codifil and our, the French Heritage to continue expanding on that. And I do think that we ought to expand the Spanish as we can. I know that it's grown at Boucher and just following through with that, um, you know, it's kind of a secondary step. But that's what I envision or see as the Magnet academies for Lafayette Parish or the STEM programs and the immersion programs. Now, the Health Academy is great too, but that kind of rolls into the STEM idea somewhat. Um, as well, um, the computer, AIOT and, and those things is all, that's all part of STEM. Um, but I think that we could really develop a strong Magnet pathway from pre-K through graduation by focusing in on those particular areas. That's just my view, I don't know what Mr. Kinesic thinks.
Well, I think, just one point I wanted to make, uh, Mr. Debataz, I think, showed clearly that, uh, he mentioned there's eleven, you know, eleven, uh, objectives, I guess, of STEM, eleven features of STEM. So it seems to me that with all of our high school, we start at the top, just like we do with colleges. Colleges, what do you need to go to college? Well, we know the things that they, they require to go into college. Certain math, foreign languages, a certain score and a certain test. But if we started at the top with our high school programs and with those directors and say, hey, when you get these middle school kids, what do they need to know? What do they need to be focused on? I, maybe they won't be great at everything, but these are some of the basics. And then same thing with the middle school level. Um, I think that if you start from a top-down approach, um, you know, obviously the requirements for a ninth grader going into performing arts is going to be different than a ninth grader going into STEM. But if we're not establishing these criteria and then holding the lower level, middle school and elementary programs accountable to producing, um, students for these upper level programs, then if we don't set it now, we'll never achieve it.
So I remember, I think it was the last meeting, we talked about having three French immersion programs and why we have three and maybe move them around or, or consolidate them or look at, look at a different model approach for that. One of the things that we can certainly do is implement, and this applies to any duplicate academy, is if you want to attend an academy because you want to get something out of that academy and learn from it, then the one that's closest to you should be the one to go to. If it turns into an issue of you have students at the northernmost section of Karen Crowe Heights, which naturally right now Evangeline would be the closest, and they want to go all the way down to Prairie, not even Myrtle, but Prairie, then that tells you that the school they really want to go to is Prairie. The question to ask is, do you really want to learn French? You know, um, we see this, I have the withdrawal request form filled up for the last year. We have lost a lot of students from transportation since school started and we developed this new satellite stop model. But if you take the number of transportation, the, the number of, uh, requests to withdraw from an academy over the whole course of a year, it's pretty much the same. We just essentially got those transportation, those, those parents to withdraw from the program early on as opposed to spread out across two sema, two years, two semesters. So one of the things that Tia and I have been talking about from middle school is to grow the program. What we look, when we looked at the data, when they leave French immersion, there's two main academies that they really apply for. It's LJ Alamo and STEM. And what that tells us is that those students, maybe if we beef up the, and I use that word. Um, grow the French immersion or the Spanish immersion at Paul Bro to have more elements of STEM and arts, it might engage the students to be more, uh, involved and, and pursue that going forward so that it's a whole environment of immersion that deals with all these things that you can't get currently. Um, so that might actually add more to it. One of the ideas that we're throwing around, instead of, you know, just eliminating Myrtle Prairie as a French immersion, is maybe move it, maybe, maybe reduce the number of students, like the out-of-zone students that can get in or, or reduce that enrollment number. With those same resources and that manageability of the programs, we could grow the other programs more. So I don't, that helps.
I just wanted to say that, uh, Ms. Morris has about seven minutes left. So if there are any other hot topics you want to talk about today.
I don't have a, I'm, I just have more data for, for any questions that you may have. I don't necessarily have any other hot topic. I think we covered most of them so far.
Mr. Kinesic, uh, from what I heard today, what I'd like to do is we'll come together, we will start drafting the administrative rule, which will look like what had been previously JBCCA policy that the board, um, eliminated. We'll come back to you with our iteration of what we think the administrative rule would look like, item by item, and bring that to you guys so that you can read over it. And if we're wrong in our assumptions, you guys can correct us.
One thing too, that I think we're all interested in is enrollment caps. We are, um, you know, we have popular programs and we're allowing them to continually grow and we're continually putting temporary buildings in places, emptying other seats in other, uh, schools. We just can't do that anymore.
You are correct. Uh, one of the things, you talked a little bit about French immersion. We, I see an opportunity at Westside Elementary School. When we move back into the permanent building, we think there'll be a hundred seats available. That could be, um, a potential site for an additional elementary French immersion program.
And, and that brings, I was at a meeting recently with Codifil and some other representatives. And there is a desire to have a Creole French program in this part of the state. So it's a little bit different, I think, than the French that's being taught. But if, at Westside, um, it may just be something to consider or to research whether, um, making that one kind of specialize as a Creole French immersion to take advantage of our unique culture, um, at, you know, but to kind of work still with the same French immersion. So as an elective perhaps, or, uh, just that cultural aspect perhaps, if we get that far. Um, I think the other thing we had talked about. I think the other thing we had talked about as well, Dr. Aguilar, is exploring locations or existing facilities within our parish that could potentially be used or assessed for additional school sites. So for example, Prairie is overcrowded and has a lot of temporary buildings, so if there was an appropriate building nearby that would house that number of students, then perhaps we put the French immersion students there, but it's still part of Prairie. It could be called the Prairie French Campus, or Prairie Campus Number Two, but it's all still part of the same system, athletics, things like that. So that's another area that we should be, now, you said you're gonna bring us a draft administrative rule, and I assume that our talks about moving academies to different locations, or building, or exploring a middle school STEM academy separate from STEM, that's what I'm considering more of a structural issue, so that's separate from the admin rule?
Obviously, we're not going to be able to bring you a full, complete program, but we definitely can bring you some ideas about moving, moving programs, capping programs, taking advantage of, you go to the school closest to your residence, so we'll try to bring you some additional ideas to improve the program.
All right, and I do have one last question, I see Mr. Spencer, I'm sitting in the audience, come on up, please.
While he's walking up here, the, the spreadsheet, the SOC data from September 18th has a column of all the permanent classrooms, the total enrollment, the number of students in the program, the temporary building capacity, total school capacity, and the variance, like, for the total and then for the permanent classroom.
And have you provided that to us?
I thought I attached it, but I'll make sure Dorothy can attach it to me.
All right, so Mr. Spencer, I had asked for some information that you kindly provided this week, so in addition to our Schools of Choice program, we also have School Choice, or Choice School, School Choice, and your department manages that. Those are students who are choosing to go to a school rather than their zoned D or F school?
Yes ma'am.
And that's the state, the state minimum is D or F, or what's the state?
The state law is D or F schools.
Yeah, or D or F, okay, and they can choose to go to another school?
A school that's A, B, or C.
Okay, so does your department work at all with the School of Choice people as far as availability, or do you rely also on the sibling, or is the sibling rule incorporated into the School of Choice policy?
We do use a sibling rule. If we have a pair of siblings, we place them first. We don't coordinate with them because we're not sending kids to the same classrooms. I literally go into the student enrollment system and look at specific classrooms, and let's say your all's recommended pupil-teacher ratio is 25, just to pick a number out of the air, I will never send to fill more than 23 seats. So if I look on the roster and I see 21 kids in a section, okay, then I'll send two students in that grade level to that school.
And let's use Prairie for example, so if you have two students to go to Prairie, you're putting them into the regular programs, not into the School of Choice programs.
Yes ma'am, we can generally tell by, in the rosters which ones. The other thing is, we do have, actually, the French immersion schools cooperate with us a great deal, we'll contact them and say, hey, look, the computer tells me you have this many openings, is that a fact? And then KC or whomever will get in touch and let us know.
All right, so it's another good reason to change the name of this program, because they are, you have School Choice, School of Choice, and then you have School Choice outside of our system that's referring to charter schools, so it is very confusing. All right, thank you. All right, does anyone else in the audience have anything they want to mention to us before I close the meeting? I see a lot of people here. Eric, anything else?
No, I think I'd be interested in seeing, or the board would be interested in seeing, maybe, and I don't know if rubric's the right term, but for an academy, what they, what their plan is to teach and what their criteria or objectives are in each one.
I've been working with the majority of academy directors to talk about that. For example, Visual and Applied Arts, Brian Lefei at Como High School, they all have these great plans, but at the end of the day, they just want that confirmation that they can actually uphold these expectations. So that's been an issue, but I actually have a lot of that ready for you guys. There's no time right now, but I can certainly attach that for the next meeting. There's curriculum, there are certifications, there's internship requirements, there's grade requirements, there's portfolio requirements, for example, for his program, some of them, he works really well with the, he works closely with the Kennedy Center, Padgett Gudry's here with the arts, she works very closely with them to develop that curriculum content and make sure that all the teachers are certified. So we have some of these programs, and they have good curriculum. The, the issue is whether we can enforce, or whether we have historically enforced any of the entry or criterias, and whether we have enforced any of the enrollment expectations, but I have those for you.
Well, and that's, that's the change that we're trying to implement, is enforcement of both. So if we know what those, you know, curriculum or what those requirements are for those programs-
Right.
-so that we can measure success-
Correct.
Then-
And we have those for you, I can attach them to the next.
And do all of the academies have them?
The majority, probably 95% of them have them. The thing in elementary school, some of it is a little bit difficult, because they have, correct me, Dr. Aguilar, but there's something called journeys they use. So they use a different kind of curriculum, and so the, you know, for lack of a better word, Magnet academies, they have to, they can just kind of incorporate some of those elements into whatever their regular journeys curriculum is. So for the elementary ones, it's kind of difficult, and we talked about LEO Judis earlier. The middle school definitely, and the high school is definite.
So my last comment is, I did review the two documents you attached, and the form that Karen Crowe uses is very good and very detailed, and something very similar to that should probably be used by all of the academies, at least the middle school and high school academies. It may not fit, but I think that it can be tweaked to fit for each level because it does show very well the kids that are in zone, out of zone, grade levels, which schools, what, or what zones are coming from, so it can give us a really good idea of just how the, what the spread is.
Perfect.
So of course, the names and addresses, we don't need to see, and I know that's for their internal use, but if a template can be prepared that all of the academies can begin using, I mean, that should be a fairly easy, and it changes never easy, I say that, but I think once that's set up, then it should be fairly easy to collect that data, and that's going to be more useful to us in addition to the survey or the exit information. We talked about, about why they're choosing to go to the academies after elementary school, so we can kind of track where they're going.
One of the, real quick, sorry, I know we're out of time, but one of the things that we've been talking about, for example, for STEM, is the points of entry could be sixth, seventh, and eighth, and that's it, if, if we keep the middle school to high school model. So if we keep it as is, we would let points of entry at sixth, seventh, and eighth, and only at ninth or 10th if space becomes available, but no longer open it for this mass 50 students at a time, or 100 students for, for, for ninth grade. So if you think of that kind of model, then you could do the same for elementary to middle. So essentially, currently, even in the, the student assignment policy that we have, it states that assignment to an academy is for a year. One of the things that I've been talking about with academy directors and principals is for the assignment to an academy to be dur, the duration of the academy. So if you look at LEO Judis Environmental Science, and the next one is Lafayette Middle Environmental Science, the commitment and the duration should technically be elementary to middle. It's irrelevant, it's at a different campus, but it's that, oops, sorry, following through. So a lot of that is going to be incorporated in some of these too. But yes, I'll have all that for you.
Thank you. All right, I'm gonna call this committee meeting to a close, and I'm sure there'll be another one scheduled in the next few weeks.
I believe the other board members that were missing from the committee requested for a meeting on Thursday.
I don't think we need to have a duplicate meeting, if they weren't able to make it, I think we can just have another meeting in a couple of weeks to follow up on where we've been today.
Okay.
Thanks.